Welcome, everybody, to the regularly scheduled public meeting of the Lower Gwinnett Board of Supervisors. I want to make a note for the minutes that we did have executive session prior to this meeting. About personnel matters. First up is announcements and presentations. We have an upcoming event coordinated with the Lower Gwinnett Police Department Community Response Unit. I would like you to visit the Lower Gwinnett website for more information. But overall, what they're going to be is the trunk or treat at the Ambler YMCA on October 29th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. In partnership with the Giant Food Store, we're going to have two events at the Giant on Bethlehem Pike. We will have Cider with a Cop on Saturday, October 29th also, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And Phila Cop Car on Saturday, November 5th from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Food donations will be accepted for the Maddie Dixon cupboard in Ambler at the Phila Cop Car. On October 29th, also, we will have the National Prescription Drug Take Back Day. And the police station will be open here from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. to accept old or any unnecessary medications. The Lower Gwinnett Park and Recreation Concert and Movie Night will also be on Saturday, October 29th at Gwinnett Mercy University. It's going to start at 6:00 p.m. with a performance by the Eric Mintel Quartet, followed by showing of the original Hocus Pocus at dusk. Also, on Saturday, October 29th, we're going to have the dedication of our solar workstation at Ingersoll Park. And that's going to be at 10:00 a.m. again at Ingersoll Park. Our Veterans Day Ceremony is going to be Friday, November 11th at 11:00 a.m. at the Veterans Memorial Park. All are welcome to attend. Next up is public comment. We want to allow the public to come on any agenda items. Prior, anything that's not on the agenda. Is there any public comment? If you could just come up and state your name and address, I don't know where the microphone is.
Good evening. My name is Carol Jones. I live at 390 Mansion Avenue in Penland. And there's a couple of things, but I'm here tonight basically to talk about campaign signs throughout Lower Gwinnett Township. Before I begin that, I know there's an issue about the signs, but all the signs were removed except on private property. And I came down Penland Pike today on private property, which is the Comforts Lot. They told me to put up the signs. And they want any signs that I don't put up to be removed. Three times today, my signs have been taken down and been replaced with other signs. It's already three times just today. So I am spending the day removing signs from personal property that are there and putting my signs back up. So that's the beginning. Three times in one day is more than enough. The second thing, well, the major thing is because that are my signs, the political signs that I haven't put up have been removed. All of them have been removed in Lower Gwinnett, which you probably see. There are certain signs that have been up for the past two or three weeks, and they've never been touched. I just put my signs up. I started this weekend on Saturday, Friday, and Saturday. And then that's when my signs have been removed. This is not the first time that whenever I put my signs up, they seem to be removed within the next couple of days. They just disappear. They're just gone. And I was told that the township was removing the signs. Someone told them to remove the signs. Whatever the reason would be. However, I've been here at least since 2017, 2018 has been many years with the same issue with the signs. And they keep referring to the zoning ordinances. And when I keep going back to the zoning ordinances on signs, first I look at the section that says 1292.02. And it specifically says residential districts. In that portion, nowhere does it say anything about a political sign, about a campaign sign, nothing in the residential section. If you continue on, and then it talks about F districts, it talks about PO districts. And then there's a, there's a section 1292.05, which is general regulations. And that says the following regulations shall apply to signs in all districts. So when I look at that under special regulations in all districts and section D2, it says, "For an event of general public interest or a temporary sign for fair exhibition, general election." I guess this is a general election right now, as if they're talking about primary general or a similar event. Such signs may be erected for not more than 30 days upon approval of the township code official. Now, that comes under the section 1292.05, which is general regulations. And then when I move on, it says, "The following regulations shall apply to all signs erected and maintained in the specific instances listed below." And then it says A, B, and then section C, it refers specifically to campaign signs. And it says, "Campaign signs may be erected only after registration with the township by a township resident and upon payment of a fee of $25. Such signs shall be removed within 10 days after the election to which they pretend." We have complied with this always. I've been to the township four, five times years in a row, asking for the form that needed to be filled out so that I could apply to have this. They always told me there was no form. I tried to pay the $25 year after year after year. They've never accepted $25. And then Joyce, who's no longer here after three or four or five years, she said, "Carol, I can't take your money because it's against the law." So I want to know right now, why are the signs gone? Why have my signs been removed? Because nothing that I see here and the township ordinance stops me from being able to put the signs. I've lived here my entire life, and we've been doing these signs for at least the last 10, 12 years, when it became a thing where there were, there was more than one party running for office. Let's put it that way.
So can I ask a question?
Yes.
The signs that were removed, you said three times earlier today on private property.
Yes.
You believe those signs were removed by the township?
No, they weren't.
Okay, they were removed by somebody.
Yeah, so that's where I started because I'm dropped. Look, I pulled out my house. I'm like, this is the third time today. And my aunt was living, and I turned the car around. I'm like, oh, no, this is the third time today. And they pull my signs up and replace them and just lay them on the ground.
Nobody wants an angry cow, Jones. I can tell you.
Well, I mean, this is.
So, so signs on private property that were removed, what happened, that obviously, there's not, there's not much the township can do about that. We don't control the private property. I don't know who's removing the signs, but I think you know that we don't have enough resources to have an officer down there 24 hours.
I understand that.
On the, that was my question.
I just thought I'd.
I don't think we should advertise that we're not going to do anything about this. I think we should listen to Carol and see if we can get to the root cause of the situation. I know from speaking with Carol in past years that this has happened. And I, I for one, would like to see that the township does do something proactively to try to prevent this. It's just wrong. And not to mention, if somebody's taking the signs off private property, I think that's theft. It may not be worth a lot of money to take a sign, but it's still not, it's still not right.
Does the chief have some suggestion?
Hello, Carol. Well, first of all, I'm not aware of today's incident. I'm not sure. I don't believe you called the police. That's fine. That's fine. So, yeah, this, we are not unique in this situation. This occurs in many, many municipalities. And there was actually a, at our chief's meeting last week, it was brought up of how are the chiefs handling? And the answer was you handle it as a, as a routine death call. And you handle it as a call to service, and we try and find out whoever is responsible for committing the theft.
As I understood from Ms. Jones, the signs weren't taken. They were just.
Laid down.
Laid down, yeah.
Yeah, so somebody, somebody.
Same thing. So like what you're saying, though, if you're doing it on private property, they probably don't have permission to be there. Right, so that, right, so it'd be a trespassing issue on somebody that's just removing something. So it can be handled by the police. Will, will everyone be solved? No, but that's how it should be. That's one avenue you have. Is call us. It's, it's a little bit of of a way to handle, and, and we can see what happens.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So your next issue was more around, I guess, are you looking for clarification?
Yeah, because nowhere in residential districts does it say anything about signs, about political signs. It's just everywhere else in here.
So I mean, I've.
And the other thing is, because this has been happening so many years, we've never gotten an answer from them. It's always a runaround. Everything always changes. People make up their own rules we hear, and then it's, it's changed again. And then when, nothing is the same as what's in your ordinance.
Okay. No, I've got, we've gotten a little bit of clarification. I, I guess I want to turn it over to our manager, just, just around specifically the complaints that came in and the reasoning why signs may have been potentially removed in the public domain.
And I was coming up here because I thought we'd be handing the microphone back and forth, but. So, so my name is Mimi Gleason. I'm the interim manager. And we did, we received a couple of complaints over the phone and by email. I don't know if they came in over the weekend or on Monday, but staff had received complaints about political signs on township property. So I'm new here. I, I was just talking to our Fred Solers, our Public Works Director, and Jamie Warman, the Assistant Manager. You know, Jamie found a memo that was from the previous township manager describing the township policy for political signs on township properties. And, and that's, it's simply a policy call for this board. The zoning ordinance doesn't apply as to whether signs would be permitted or not permitted on township property. Just like, so the zoning, the, the reason you were getting kind of mixed signals from staff before is because there's been court rulings in recent years saying that, emphasizing that local governments like Lower Gwinnett cannot have zoning regulations that apply specifically to political signs. So the regulations that are in our zoning ordinance are not enforceable. Even if they were, it's what tells a property owner what is permitted. It doesn't mean if, if for, if campaign signs in residential district was a, a legal regulation, that doesn't mean every homeowner has to allow somebody else to put signs on their property. That homeowner can decide whether they're going to allow signs on their property. Similarly, the township can decide whether, and it's the Board of Supervisors who decides whether signs will be permitted on township properties. So the, the standing policy is that political signs, any signs, whether business, commercial, non-commercial, political, are not permitted on township property. So, and we hadn't been, I don't think anyone had been looking for them, but once we got complaints, we went out and looked. There was on, on a couple of the township properties that, and I gave, I made the decision, this is the policy. You know, have our, our public work staff go out and remove the signs. I had no idea whose signs they were. I didn't know when they'd been put up there. I didn't know which party they were. That wasn't it. It was just implementing the policy that was in place.
Okay, so there's nowhere that says that you cannot put signs on public property. Is that true, too?
Policy that's in place.
We never, the public was never informed of this policy that I just saw today, of this policy that was written up. Like Kathleen Hunziger wrote a letter to me back in 2018. It doesn't, it doesn't explain any of that. I got one in 2019, right before that memo came out. They've been having signs up for 10 years. No one has ever said anything until Carol goes to put out her signs. And this has been, you know, you know, I don't know whether it's me, whether it's the Democratic Party. I don't know what it is, but.
I didn't know that if you, I didn't know when the signs were, I don't know what the history is here. I know we've been here a couple of months.
There had been, there had been signs that were out for a couple of weeks, you know? And then all of a sudden, there's too many signs out there. When we went and put our signs out, then there were too many signs. But the whole time, signs have been out, year after year after year after year, signs that Kathleen puts her signs out. And she's a supervisor. And she, when she was running for reelection, she had signs out. And no one else knows about a memo with, you know, that came out, that came out ironically in 2019, since all this has been going on. So no one has ever told us that you can't erect a sign on public property, nor has anything ever showed that, because every election, every year, there have been these signs out.
I think just to clarify, every supervisor who's sitting up here on this board has had signs in the public domain when we ran. So I think it, I understand exactly what you're saying.
I'm just talking about the years back then, and no one wrote me a letter besides Kathleen. She's the one that actually personally wrote me a letter about it, which.
I think we need to have clarification on the policy. It certainly sounds like it's confusing to you. It sounds confusing to me. So I think we need some clarification on the policy. I don't think unfortunately, we're going to get clarification on the policy before November 8th.
Oh, no.
But this won't be the last election, and we'll need to make this more understandable to the public.
And make sure that everybody knows about it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Carol.
My name is Gloria Jones. I live at 1007 Person Road, Penland, PA. This is not the first time that this issue has been addressed at a supervisor's meeting. In October in 2018, there was quote unquote, a reasonable discussion at a meeting that sign, the sign codes lacked clarity and needed to be reviewed. At that time, even the township solicitor commented that the campaign sign codes had not always been adhered to in the past. And up until, this is 2018, and up until two years at that time, campaign signs were being posted 30 days prior to the election in most counties and even in Lower Gwinnett. Now, at the end of that meeting, this fairly reasonable discussion of signs, there seemed to be a consensus that at the end of that meeting, that the high-quality sign codes should be reviewed for clarity. So maybe you need to start working on some clarity for signs. It's too bad that this happens year after election, year after election, year. And in a democracy, that ought not to be happening. So I thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Neil, I don't know if there's any clarification that you want to provide.
Yeah, just to clarify, a township can impose regulations, zoning regulations on political signs, including those on private property, provided they are content-neutral regulations. They are time, place, and manner regulations that are applied in the same manner as any other temporary sign. Secondly, a township can prohibit political signs on public property. A policy is not an ordinance. It's not enforceable like an ordinance. It involves too much discretion. So I don't know if I should be giving legal opinions about policies, but in my opinion, you would need an ordinance that specifically says signs cannot be erected on public property in order for that type of regulation to be enforceable.
Neil, are policies something that, like if a board has a policy, is it discussed and voted on at a public meeting? Or is it more of an internal?
It can be either one, but my understanding is this was more of an internal type of policy, that it wasn't necessarily authorized by board action, which makes it even less enforceable.
Okay. So is there, just, just for clarification, because I don't know who's all signs. I know that Carol identified some of them were hers. Can we say where the signs are and that make sure that everyone knows where they are so that they can retrieve them?
I'll give it to Mimi in a second, but I think we're confusing the word public and, and township property. You, you keep saying public property, and, and Carol said public property a couple of times. But her second complaint is township property. Is township property public property?
Yes, yes.
It is.
It's, it's, public property is not the right term of art. There's a term of art called a public forum. That's, I think that's what you're talking about, whether this is a public forum.
A traditional public forum.
Triangle is a public forum, traditional public forum, or limited public forum versus township property. You just can't throw a, any sign you want on this building.
And it's very, it's an important distinction. So it isn't, so while the township property is public property, not all public property is township property. So this, this was, as the property owner, township properties, you can set a policy of whether you will allow signs, advertising signs of any kind.
That's got to be an ordinance.
And I, I don't mean, so it's those little, you know, the, the window washers that put up signs and those kind of like yard collection. We, we collect all of those signs too, because staff's understanding is the board's policy is you don't want those little yard signs in the parks. So that, that's just a policy decision you can make as the property owner of township properties. That's all that this policy is. And I'll, I'll give the microphone to Freddie, who knows where the, the signs are now. But I, I guess something, the staff will need guidance on what you want us to do for the next two weeks with signs on township properties.
Okay, the signs that we collected are all behind the building in what is a dog pen that there's no dogs in. It's unlocked. It's just a fenced-in area so they would be all kept together. And so they're all there. They're just piled in. We let everyone know in the office, if they got a phone call, somebody wanted to come get their signs, they're welcome to pick them up. Nobody has to be here because it's not locked in the building or anything. So they're all still there. They're just stacked up. They're not in any order or sorted. They're just.
Yeah, this is.
Random pile.
So this is really not, this is a, a clear lack of communication then, because the public may have no idea where those signs are. So we, we need to maybe have something on our electronic news release, or maybe it's too late for that. But some clarification as to where signs might be that have been collected. And I'm not criticizing you at all, Fred. I, I think if that is our policy, then I, I understand it. But this is a real unfortunate situation that I have never heard in the past that the township was collecting signs. So I'm glad this is coming to light that we're having this discussion, because this is very unfortunate for people who are trying to advertise their candidacy. So thanks for pointing that out.
The signs will actually be moved. The sign will be moved.
You have to talk, if you could, nobody can hear you. Yeah, nobody can hear you on Zoom. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So the signs were removed before, and I asked, I was following the truck that was taking down the signs. And I said, "Why are you taking down the signs?" And they said, "My boss instructed me to take down the signs." So I'm going behind that, you know, getting my signs. I get to go all the way down in the pipe. I get to give yourself a feel on it in Penland. I've been in this all field, and the truck goes, "I'm sorry." I got the wrong instruction. You can have your signs back. So I got the signs came up here, despite we said we want the signs back here. I made my decision to put them out of me, so I'm fine with seeing that. And that's going to have the issue.
Well, that begs the question of what are we doing this year? I mean, we need to give the public some certainty, I think. I don't.
My suggestion would be, since we don't have an ordinance, and none of us sitting up here voted on a policy, well, I don't. I wasn't here when we voted on a policy to, to ban signs. I thought would be the default would be let the signs go up, and we should take this up at our next meeting and figure out, are we going to have a policy? And what's that policy going to be?
I mean, like I'm aware of the fact that we're having a discussion, and it seems like there might even be some confusion as to what is public versus township-owned and how we interpret that and what that actually means. I, I think at this point, though, given the fact that they were removed and the public clearly did not have clarification, or at least an understanding of what, what the expectation was and what, how the township was interpreting a previous policy, that they should be allowed to continue, at least until we have the opportunity to, to discuss and, and address our ordinance or lack of ordinance. But because there is no ordinance, I don't know if this is something that we can motion on, or how do we proceed? Do we need to amend?
You could just, this isn't about an ordinance or a code issue. You can just make a motion for what you want the action to be. If you want, you know, like you can make a motion to direct staff to leave all of the signs of any kind on township property.
It, it would have to be any kind.
Any kind.
None, it would have to be, we can treat commercial signs slightly differently. But for non-commercial signs, as Neil said, we have to act, whether by ordinance or township action, in a content-neutral, viewpoint-neutral manner. So that means we may be seeing a lot of signs that have nothing to do with campaigns at the triangle. And we will have to leave them there.
We can't limit it to campaign or election signs. No.
That would not be content neutral.
Cannot do that.
So the only thing that we technically could remove would be commercial signs. You're talking about the junk luggers or the, I don't know, blowout sales. Is that accurate?
Well, I'm not saying it's accurate. I'm saying that commercial speech is treated differently than non-commercial speech.
Okay. So I'm going to ask if there's any additional comments from the public or from the board.
I, I just would not like to rush into a decision. Let's give it a little bit of thought.
We don't have another meeting prior to the 8th of November, so we wouldn't be able to.
Well, I, I'm sorry, Gloria, just one second. I think that if we communicate clearly with the public, as we're saying here, the expectation for the next few weeks, then I'm okay with whatever this policy is, but we do need to have some thoughtful discussion about going forward. And I don't think I want to make that decision tonight.
No, I think the only thing we, well, I'm, I don't want to speak for everybody else. I think the only thing that we could talk about right now is just how to handle things in the interim, until we can have thoughtful discussion as far as how we're going to handle this moving forward. Is that, is that accurate now?
Yes.
I think we should certainly have a full discussion on this at our next meeting, I thought I was proposing. It's just what are we doing right now? Are we leaving the policy in place that we didn't?
We didn't know existed.
Or are we, are we not?
Yeah.
My, my suggestion would be to not have it in place, since we didn't know it existed, and then talk about it. And if we want to put it in place, put it in place and, and in an ordinance, if that's what Neil thinks is, advises is, is the most appropriate course of action of policy.
Could someone take the microphone to Gloria Jones? I'm sorry. I was trying to make it so you didn't have to walk back up.
Thank you. You have had a sign ordinance in the past. Am I to understand that you're thinking about working on a sign ordinance now, because it's not only political signs that you need to address. There are all signs in township, and I think maybe you want to give a look, see at an ordinance that covers all the signs for the township.
Absolutely. I think that's a good point.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments?
I think this area of the law is complicated. And for us to make a decision tonight, and I understand we need to give certainty, given that it's two weeks before the campaign, or two weeks before the election. I don't think we have enough information from our solicitor to make that decision yet, and I'm concerned how we proceed. Now, that being said, I understand that we have to give certainty. Now, that being said, I understand that we have to give certainty. Um, but I, I have concerns about the parameters of what we can do and what we cannot do.
Neil, do you wanna address any of those concerns?
That would be a very lengthy discussion.
So I guess
I, I'm, I'm sorry, um, I just wanna note that it wasn't selective enforcement of pulling up these signs. They all came up and we've been taking the signs up, commercial signs or whatever, um, on a regular basis. It just gives us a nice clean look in our township. Um, I would concur with Mike and Tessie. Um, just to go with the status quo and, um, have a decision in clarity for twenty twenty or I don't run. Twenty twenty-three primary. Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think this is gonna take a lot of, of thought to come to the best policy. I, I don't mean to diminish anybody wanting to put signs out, but I would just stick with our current situation that no, no signs to go ahead and pick them up off of township property, not anywhere else, of course.
So, uh, now I just wanna be clear because they're not removed from all township property. They're only removed from certain areas in the township, the property that the township owns, I assume. And I say this because I live near township property that they still, they're still up on. So. I'm not telling you. There's a lot of spots that were missed that are, that I guess, I know that it's owned by the township. So it seems like it's more around Bethlehem Pike, Penland Pike, that the enforcement was tailored to.
The, the, the other, the other issue that concerns me a little bit, and maybe Neil can speak to it. But again, this is, without having researched the specific issue, this isn't sort of top of mind for the vast majority of lawyers, but there are certain, there are certain public forums where you can't eliminate speech. So if this, if the triangle, for example, well, Veterans Park, if that's deemed the full public forum, we can't say you can't speak there. I mean, I don't think we can take that position. I don't think we can, what Neela talked about is time, place, matter regulations. The first word is reasonable time, place, matter regulations. It's seen, my concern is what, if, if in fact that triangle is a public forum, we are eliminating speech in that public forum. That is not a reasonable time, place, matter restriction.
So, i- and this is my question to Neil, which is what I was kind of gonna ask before we made any motion or non-motion. Are we open our, are we opening ourselves up to being sued by restricting the ability for individuals to place signs on township-owned property or public property, whether it's I'm sorry?
Well, I, I have no idea who may or may not file a lawsuit, but in the absence of an ordinance that prohibits the placements of signs on township-owned property, sure, there's an opportunity there for someone to file a lawsuit.
Is the default, Neil, if it's township property, the default is that the speech should be permitted? I, I mean,
I'm a first, I'm a First Amendment person, so I don't believe in necessarily restricting free speech.
It, it depends if you, I think we're getting caught up into the township property. It depends if it's a public forum.
A traditional public forum is subject to a heightened level of scrutiny.
I guess what I'm saying is townships that don't have these policies or ordinances. People put up signs, is that the default? And then the township comes in and creates an ordinance to prohibit or restrict or to limit or? A, a lot of townships have a policy, not an ordinance, a policy of practice that they are not gonna allow signs of any kind on their properties. They don't want, you know, during the year or throughout the year, they don't want to assign people kinda helping themselves to township property in, at parks and at the township building cluttering it up. During the political season, many municipalities want that policy in place because they want people to feel comfortable going to the parks. It's neutral territory. So you just avoid the risk that one party, one candidate gets there first, floods the place with signs. People then come, you know, their kids are playing soccer and feel like, oh, it's a partisan place now. Or they're coming to the township building and, you know, it's, it's on one, the, the township government, not just elected officials are on one side of the partisan, um, spectrum and not the other. So to avoid that kind of, of controversy and causing discomfort, they'll have a policy that they don't allow signs of any kind on properties that that municipality owns.
So if we wanna say no, no, that's a form of speech. I mean, how far would we take it? Would we say somebody couldn't stand on the corner and give a speech in Veterans Park or any of the parks? I'm, I'm concerned where we're headed.
Right.
I, I'm just, I, and these are good points that have been raised that we absolutely need to consider. But we're, I don't think we can consider them in the span of time that we have to make a really informed decision. And at least for me, in the absence of conducting the research, there's an old Supreme Court case, more speech is always better than less speech.
So default to removing the policy, allowing the speech? And then we could take this up at the next meeting after Neil's had time?
One, one way, one way may be unconstitutional.
Right.
That's what worries me. One way may be unconstitutional. So it's, it's not just the township property. It's whether it's the traditional public forum piece of it.
And that's a complicated analysis.
So then to avoid any risk of doing something unconstitutional, we wanna let the signs out.
To allow it for the next two weeks to, I mean, that's the one where we're not.
Well,
Right.
We don't have, if you were to say the signs can only be a certain size, that is a traditional reasonable time, place, matter restriction. If you say no commercial signs, that might be a reasonable restriction. But you couldn't say just political signs. That would not be, that is a content.
It's not content neutral.
Yeah, it's not content neutral. Same thing if you said just Republican signs or just Democratic signs. That's the worst type of violation because it's viewpoint.
Although there is a case that upheld an ordinance that said no political signs within a hundred feet of a polling place.
Yeah, that's right. That's a different story because there's a, that passes. Every time you try to restrict the constitutional rights, you can, municipalities can do it. It just has to pass a certain level of scrutiny. So that passed, it was intermediate scrutiny?
That was a strict scrutiny.
It was. Yeah.
So I'm gonna make a motion. Is there any additional comments from the public, from the board? Um, given the fact that I would not want us to do anything unconstitutional or, or infringe upon anybody's constitutional rights in the intermediary time between us being able to discuss and propose an ordinance and review this thoroughly, I wanna make a motion for us to allow signs on, at the triangle on public property, township property. Is there a second? On all township? On all township property. Is there a second?
Can we do that? Could we just say the vet, just could we just say the, the triangle and?
Are we allowed to?
Are we allowed to do that? Or do we have?
It depends on whether it's a traditional public forum or not. It's
So are we considering?
Now you're picking and choosing.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that we have the ability.
Are we creating a public forum by allowing some? All right.
No, the city of Los Angeles says there's no absolute right to use, uh, public property. It depends on the analysis.
So can we make it clear it's temporary?
What? I'd say the, the triangle, I, I mean,
What, what, what do we mean by the triangle?
I think he's calling veterans.
The campaign signs seem to go for
Texaco lot and behind the, you know,
I wasn't even thinking of the Texaco lot. I was thinking right behind Veterans Park.
Behind Veterans Park where the, the roads kind of mer, or separate.
Yeah, I mean,
I think that it's
Think that they should be in front of our township building now.
I agree.
I agree.
I think the township building is not a traditional public forum.
That was always my interpretation of it.
Okay.
But I don't know, I don't know if it's been determined.
Can we do temporarily the, the triangle where most of the signs are typically set up leading up to?
No, we can't limit it to one place.
Well, we're saying no township building. We are limiting it. I mean, right?
Well, I, you know, it's either a hundred percent or zero percent. I, I'm not sure how we can do any intermediate.
I, I disagree because you're talking about things that are public buildings versus public forums. So for example, the, I think we could certainly say no signs at the Public Works Building on Bethlehem Pike. That's not a public forum, but that's township property.
Well, okay, who's going to tell the public what's a public forum and what's not a public forum? I think it's a very complicated situation and, um, but there's no clear, uh, resolution in the short term.
I think historically, we've all used common sense and discretion and interacted in a way that, um, made sense. There isn't historically signs being put up in front of the township building with, and clearly we were absent an ordinance that prohibited it. There has never been signs put in front of the freezer building down on Bethlehem Pike. I think individuals aren't looking for the public forum or the public building. I think they're looking for the most visible place
Exactly.
where the majority of cars are gonna pass. So it never would make sense to put it in front of the township building because it's not necessarily an easy place to see. The circle or you're calling it the triangle.
Yeah, but if we're talking about limiting the freedom of signs to one township-owned property, that was my understanding of what Mike was saying, then I think we cannot do that. Um, I'm not opposed to people putting signs anywhere, but we just have to be clear as to what is allowed and not allowed based on our understanding of, um, the township's, uh, well, the First Amendment, but the historic township, um, uh, or not ordinance, um.
It's just a policy that
Policy.
Yeah.
Um, so.
So, I mean, we have a policy in place. No, this board did not vote on it. But by, you know, default, it, it remains on the books of Leeward-Gwinnett Township. So we're here now.
But it's, it's a memo and it doesn't speak to even what our ordinance speaks to, I think. I think if you, if you look at the
Making a distinction between policy and ordinance and that's really all we have right now.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's two weeks out of the election. I don't think signs are, um, going, in just my personal opinion, a material factor that's going to sway the election either way. Also, given the fact that they, it's just seems like a competition out there. We just follow with what we have on, on our policy right now, just for a matter of clarity, letting the public know and moving on. And taking the time really guides that of what is apparently a very complicated issue.
So are you making that a motion or is that a comment?
I'll make it a motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I
Opposed? Opposed?
Nay. Sorry, I can't, I can't vote to say no signs.
I, I nay as well.
This motion fails three to two. So we do not have a decision or a clear distinction to advise the public.
Thinking too much about this. How about if we just, it, it's only two weeks that we, we'll just, we'll back off. People, other than maybe the town, township building if you want, but otherwise people decide where they wanna put the signs and we're just gonna stay out of it for now. We'll, we'll just do nothing. And then at the next meeting, we'll, 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 we'll have some more information for the board to digest and start working through the process to figure out what you can do, what you can't do and what you want to do.
I'm that too.
I'm fine with that. I don't know if that's
And don't make a motion. Just if every, if anybody disagrees with me, speak up now. Otherwise, the staff will know what to do.
All right, so very good.
So you
Are there any additional comments from the public?
You better get on camera.
Are there any additional, um, comments from the public? Very good. Moving on to general business. Um, we're actually building and zoning. First up, we have a presentation of the Gwinnett Estates preliminary final land development plan to construct a two-story public and parking for forty skilled nursing bed.
There's nothing about the First Amendment in this presentation.
I hope not. And we're, we were making it
I was just saying, there's no First Amendment in this presentation. Right? Okay, thank you.
Could you just introduce yourself to us just for, for, for a minute?
Yes, part of attorney from Hamburg Rubin here on behalf of the applicant. We also have Johanna, the engineer, and Jeremy Philo, the architect. And Ken Cameris, I believe, is online, who's the Axe representative.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Um, it, it's been a while. Uh, we had started this process a while ago at my Montgomery County Planning Commission Review Letters from twenty twenty. And as indicated on your agenda, this is a forty skilled nursing beds at the existing retirement community. Uh, we have a couple of review letters, the Gilmore Letter from September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, the MCPC September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty letter, the McMahon August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two letter, and a fire marshal email from August eighth, twenty twenty-two. We went to the planning commission in September. Um, and one of the issues that had been holding us up, um, was, uh, we were meeting with the country club, Old Jerk Road Country Club. And, um, I'm not sure, I don't think, uh, Mary Ann Knight had been present before, uh, different, uh, township meetings and also a staff meeting that we had, uh, Mary Everly, who's an attorney, a land development
And just, we just gave an agreement about the, um, storm orders on the day the issue year proposed whole eleven and came to an agreement. I said that to, uh, Mary Everly this morning on Fire and Facts and, um, I mean, uh, Mary Ann Knight is getting that sign. We did come to, we did come to an agreement on, on the, uh, storm work and the firm. The issue was Axe was proposing a firm, but we can't go over the Williams pipeline movement. Uh, the country club indicates they have, uh, a very good relationship with the, um, pipeline and they, they can get permission from the engineer, whereas we were unable to obtain permission from the pipeline engineer to go over their designated area where the pipeline is. So, um, the firm that they instructed will be only on Axe property. We better reach an agreement as if either of us can get, uh, Williams pipeline agreement and the firm will be extended and there'll be some modifications also on the Axe property right here, um, their proposed whole, their, that's not their proposed whole. It's their whole, whole number eleven. They're proposed for a modification on their side of the product. So we have reached that agreement. There were some other concessions made to, uh, Old Jerk Road Country Club, including we had gotten zoning leave also a couple of years ago. Uh, we relocated, um, parking spaces for them and provided additional offering. So we worked through many issues with Old Jerk Road Country Club. It took a while, an hour here for the forty skilled beds. And, um, at this time, uh, so I think we say we resign supply with all the review letters, which we have a waiver letter from September sixteenth. forty skilled beds and um at this time, uh, so I think we say we resign supply with all the review letters, which we have a waiver letter from September sixteenth. Uh, there are five items. There was one additional item noted in the Gilmore letter um where we indicated uh after Gilmore indicated that we complied with that. So it was reduced to five waivers that were requested. And the first waiver is basically to permit one submission of a preliminary and final plan. The second waiver was requiring all the features within two hundred feet. It's picked it on the plan. We had provided an area. The third waiver is for the proposed ruling area being the date of the Jack line movement against Williams Pipeline. So at the point we received, I believe, at this time, we have to see permission from Williams Pipeline to put that in the area there. Uh, the fourth waiver remembers to curb installation and carway widening along all the state roads in Mississippi Ten and uh Norris Town. There are we're keeping it the same way. They're not there today. We're asking for that waiver to continue as it is today. And the uh final waiver is for a landscape strip for more than ten parking spaces. Um, in one location, in the front of the building, we have twelve parking spaces in a row. And we're asking um not have that landscape strip uh with those two additional parking spaces.
Thank you so much.
Um, question for our solicitor. Will the agreement with Old York Road become part of this record? Is it something that we need in other words?
Well, I think you can make your approval conditions on that agreement.
I'm sorry, no.
That agreement being executed.
Yeah. And we we don't have an issue with that. I would say we were just waiting for uh the county club to agree with.
Are there any additional questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? Thank you so much for the presentation. Um, and I'm just just to be clear, this is not a a voting
No.
matter. This is just the presentation.
No, but if the board is satisfied, you can direct me to prepare a resolution for approval at the next meeting.
Again, are are there any concerns from the board? Make the motion to um direct our solicitor Neil Stein to prepare a motion or prepare a resolution for the proposal. So all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Resolution twenty twenty-two, updating Lower Gwinnett's Birdtown designation. I we have a resolution in front of us. Um, and I know that this is a matter that I think we had before us previously. I think there's some specification, so I don't know if there's anyone from the EAC that's present that wants to, you can come forward. Thank you. If you could just say your name for the
Yeah.
minutes. I think so. Maybe push that.
Now, now.
There you go.
Uh, Stephen Saffier. EAC, a member of the EAC. I thought I'd give a little background of the Birdtown program since a lot of people here may not be familiar with it. Uh, the Birdtown program started uh was started in two thousand and eleven by Audubon, Pennsylvania, which is the state office of the National Audubon Society. Lower Gwinnett has been at Birdtown since twenty fifteen and is part of a growing network of thirty-six bird towns uh around the region and state. The original Pennsylvania program inspired similar programs around the country and is currently in at least six other states. In the summer of twenty twenty-one, Audubon relinquished ownership of the program and it's now managed by Birdtown, Pennsylvania, which operates under the Pennsylvania Audubon Council, a nonprofit union of all of the state's independent twenty-one Audubon chapters. I know it's confusing. Uh, protocol for this new structure requested the adoption of a resolution or a new resolution and the replacement of street signs, which Lower Gwinnett has already done. There's a couple more to go. Uh, Birdtown, Birdtown's objective was and remains quite simple to provide residents with a way to learn about backyard nature through interactions with one of the most accessible forms of wildlife, birds, although I had like an eight-point buck on my property today, so they may be a little more accessible. Creating a or enhancing habitat, reducing risks, and feeding birds allows people to better understand the natural mosaic of which we are all part. The program focuses on native plants and connectivity to larger landscapes and greenways, and there is no shortage of those in Lower Gwinnett. A key aspect of the program is education, and as such, we are now offering monthly bird walks for residents at local parks and plan for a series of lectures and workshops, including the winter talk, a winter talk. A citizen science bird challenge from Cornell Lab that can be conducted from the comfort of your own program that the EAC is already engaged in also support birds in Birdtown. The recent successful pre getaway is perfectly same. Our goal is that every resident who passes a Birdtown sign at the end of the township understands what it means or at least is curious about. What can I do in my backyard, in my schoolyard, in my commercial property that will allow me to provide food, seed, and support ten thousand birds that are living or use it as a micro Jordan. Birdtown is about getting excited about nature around just beyond. Turns out helping to have the birds is pretty nice. Uh, so that's a brief synopsis. There's a great website for a town PA that we um a lot of work into recently, so I encourage you to go there. Uh, as far as now standard, I looked at a picture with the board um with the sign presenting sign. Which can make the last population recognition.
Where's the picture gonna go on the website?
The, yeah, this will be.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Nope.
Any questions from the public? So what we have before us is a resolution, Lower Gwinnett Township, to adopt initiatives to be recognized as a Birdtown um for Pennsylvania Birdtown. And the resolution and all the wherasons are before you. I'm making a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Why don't we get some Janine and Tessie down there? And there's other members out there.
We can do the whole board. It's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That sounds good. Okay.
Commercial break.
Thank you. Um, next up, we have a a proposed steam stream crossing signs for two thousand and twenty-two. So we kind of have an outline of a memo with that was in the manager's report that um indicates the creeks that would like to be, the creeks or streams that would like to be identified. Seems to be three, it the the roads that would overcross with those with those streams and or creeks, a map to show us. Um, so it's three streams, five locations for each stream, one sign in each direction for a total of thirty signs. The signs, um, there is a graphic that kind of depicts what the sign would look like. They're thirty-six by twelve at twenty-seven dollars each for a total of eight hundred and ten dollars. Um, it does indicate an eight-foot green lap slice post at thirty-two dollars each for a total of nine hundred and sixty dollars. The total cost for the proposed stream sign crossings, one thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. Are there any questions from the board?
Um, would Public Works be installing these? So we refer no installation cost? Oh, I'm sorry.
In the in the first.
Sorry, my bad.
Are there any additional questions from the board?
Love the idea.
Any questions from the public?
Uh, this is Mark Schaefer with the EAC. This, I just, if there are any other questions, uh, this was proposed in last year's budget for a few more streams, but I wanted to start with just the key ones here. These are all streams that are completely within Lower Gwinnett Township. So they're kind of our streams. And uh, once we get these up and kind of get the hang of it, uh, we may come back with some more. And again, the whole idea is to uh just remind the public that uh we are surrounded by nature in a different way that uh we usually tend to not think about. And this will just help raise awareness of uh the natural landscape around us. And as we work towards cleaning the Whistick and Creek, this will kind of remind people of where their water comes from, where it goes. So I appreciate the board's support.
Thank you. Are there any additional com- comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, I'm gonna make a motion um to allow the purchase of the items totaling one thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars that are in this memo for the proposed stream crossing signs. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Um, next up, we have the two thousand twenty-three budget um expense overview. I'm going to turn it over to our manager.
So the um staff is working on finalizing the twenty-three budget, which will be presented to the board at your next meeting in full. Uh, most of the funds are done, the uh or it almost complete drafts are done. The township is in good shape. You're not going to be looking. I will not be asking for a tax increase um or other fee increases. Uh, but there are a few items that it would help to have some feedback from the board. And I I left copies of um information that I'm going to discuss just with a little bit of background information on the dice for all of you. So first, ARPA funding. The township has received one point two million dollars in American Rescue Plan Act funding from the federal government. Needs to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-six. It needs to be appropriated by the end of twenty twenty-four. So there's still some time to work this out. Um, but we've we've had discussions through the the budget workshop and kind of ongoing other things that have come up. Um, so a- at the budget workshop, we talked about using ARPA funds for the Bethlehem Pike Bridge replacement if the township is not successful with the grant that we've applied for. Um, if we are, then using it for stormwater management projects that are in the capital project plan. So I've showed that on there. Um, we have, uh, the staff has been talking about not quite getting to because of time constraints, scanning documents, hard copies. And um, so it a a cost estimate is about thirty-five thousand dollars to outsource all of that. That actually is in this year's budget, but it is something that you can use ARPA funding for. So we've rolled it over into next year's budget and suggesting that we could use ARPA funds to cover that. And one other suggestion is to make one-time contributions to the the two fire companies and the ambulance company. Um, this is money that was given to the township because of of COVID and they all struggled to continue to respond to services while protecting their volunteers and staff during COVID. It was a very stressful time. So just you could offer something as a gesture of appreciation. I'd like to see if there's any other i- ideas, suggestions, priorities from the board for how to use this funding. What do you want to do with it?
What what are the restrictions?
Well. They, so the the written instructions still still exist that the money is to be used for um to make up for lost revenue, to um prepare essentially for the next pandemic. You could, you know, if there were other improvements that needed to be made to the building, if you didn't already have the ability to have online meetings, virtual meetings in here. For example, you can use it for that equipment. It's why you can use it for document scanning. This is something that's been permitted from the get-go. The idea being it makes it easier to work online because then your your documents are stored online. Um, or for, you know, as as for some of the essential workers who struggled during the COVID, which is the idea with fire and ambulance. However, the the some of the um informal feedback we're getting is that you could kind of spend it on whatever you want because at this point, I I think the spending has been slow and the federal government would like to see progress.
I think the big restriction is salaries or you can't use it for salary.
Yeah, when when would we know if we are or are not going to get a a grant for that bridge?
Probably by the end of this month.
Do do we know um we haven't seen the Brookside Avenue study results yet, have we?
We have some. Now.
So.
Coming soon.
I have um I guess that that's a significant issue we have to address. And I want to make sure that if we spend a million dollars it's going to solve the problem. If we think it may not solve the problem, there are issues that that we've discussed previously and have been brought to our attention within your sol. I would suggest that may be a good use for the funds as well. I mean, Brookside Avenue was a priority without a doubt. But I haven't seen the study yet. I haven't asked questions about it, so I don't know if what's proposed. I I I guess I don't want to just throw a million dollars away if it's not going to solve the problem. And I know a million dollars would solve the problem at Angersaw. So I think it's hard to make a decision until we have a chance to talk to Jim about that. I don't want to put Jim on the spot.
No, I kind of agree. I think there's a lot. There's a lot of things still up in the air. Um that could potentially come through that we don't necessarily know about. The flood study on Brookside having clear ideas as to what we would need as far as just obligation wise as well as if any of the grants that we've applied for through like the local share and then the bridge, it it gives us a better percent. I I like the idea of how it's being spread about around and not focused on one specific area. But I think there might be other areas that might prioritize depending upon how things go. Um, Ingersoll being one of them. Brookside's clearly one. Um, flood mitigation, I think, just overall has to be at top of mind and priority.
I can say it's also something that's been permitted from the beginning too.
Water. Yeah, I mean, I I think I can say safely document scanning seems fine.
Yeah.
And I don't think that it's going to be out of.
Assume that was not a random number, but it was ten percent of the total ARPA for the emergency services seems fine.
And I am, and I agree with that as well. I think it's the larger chunk as far as how we go about that, but I don't think we have enough answers to make. Uh, for me, I don't feel like I have enough answers to make informed.
I would be in favor of the bridge uh first i- if we don't get a grant. And then stormwater management. We have such a problem with that in the township. You know, that it may be spread amongst several different projects, but if it's all related to stor- stormwater, uh, it gets us a little farther down the road toward uh mitigation of some of the problems.
Okay. I don't know. Are there comments from anyone else on the board?
No, I agree with Mike on the Ingersoll um proposal.
What exactly Ingersoll?
Um, they uh we discussed uh putting in restrooms, snack stand.
Putting them up to store and.
Getting water and, yeah, clean water and store.
Part of our master plan. That stuff.
It was. It was, excuse me, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm hmm. Okay.
It was, we applied for, we actually applied for ARPA funding uh with Montgomery County for that project and and didn't get it, but.
Well, um, for the bridge, we have to do that. Um, presumably the engineering and whatnot is going to fix the problem at the cost of nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And in the alternative, the stormwater, I'm I'm fine with your presentation.
Okay.
All right, I'll keep moving on. Um, EAC, since there's still people here, I just wanted to get just a little bit of um both clarification and and explain a change that would be in the budget that's not a change in funding. It's just as we're trying to to think through some things. So in twenty twenty-two, there's thirty-five thousand dollars that's budgeted for various EAC projects. Unless I I hear differently, I was going to keep that funding the same. There's, it looks like even with the um with the stream crossings, about twenty thousand dollars roughly will probably be spent by the end of this year. Um, but I also, you know, clearly the EAC is kind of ramping up that um I would leave the funding at thirty-five thousand. But it would be in two different places. We were gonna put about ten thousand dollars of that money in the stormwater fund. for the tree giveaway so that we can start paying for it out of some of the fee and lieu tree replacement money that we're getting. So I didn't want anyone to think I'm proposing cutting the EAC's fund.
So it, just for clarification purposes, is it necessary to identify the funding? Given that they would have to come before the board and make their request regardless, based upon us spending money, we have to authorize it. If we just allow it to be open, meaning we're not necessarily limiting the tree giveaway to 100 trees or 200, you know what I'm saying? If, if there is no budget, it gives them the leeway to expand upon what the needs of the township are?
You, you need to have some budget, I think, just to have some, some guidance to start with. But I'm not, unless you all want it, I'm not looking for more details to include. I, I wanted to know what number to put in the budget and make sure you understood, you know, kind of the direction we were going in as we're trying to come up with a little bit more of somewhat clearer plan for the use of the, the tree replacement and, and the stormwater fund and kind of identifying more clearly or defining maybe more clearly what some of the funds that we have that are related to the general fund, but separate from the general fund, how they would be used for.
And just along that same line, should other committees be requesting if they know that there are not park and rec? But I'm thinking more historic knows that they potentially might have costs that they need to incur on the human relation commission if they want to put on presentation and educational workshops. Do we need to identify that now or can that just come as a proposal to us as needed?
I would suggest because they're new and unlikely to be asking for huge dollar amounts at first anyway. That I, I think that would be fine. It could be small enough that we could absorb it in other budget line items. And if it were big enough, you could always consider a budget amendment. But I don't think there's any reason to have, have, I've gotten guests to be totally making up numbers at this stage. You could give them more time to get their legs under them.
Okay.
Yeah. So Lisa may want to say something.
This is working. Okay. You said $10,000, you're talking about sources of funds, not use of funds. So $10,000 every come from the waiver pot is not necessarily the limit of the tree giveaway. Right. Because that's just to clarify. Yeah. Just that's where you would sort of.
So does that sound like a pretty good guess? I, I think, I don't think the board's going to have an issue and there's enough money in the stormwater fund that if it wound up being $12,000 worth of trees, that's not a problem. If you think you really want to make it a whole lot bigger and you're thinking 25,000, you know, like twice as big as what you did this year. Then I just, that would help with figuring out what numbers to put where as, you know, your, your best guesses now. That's kind of what I was looking for right now.
I, I, I'm sorry.
Definitely hope to make it bigger than this year because this was just like a test year to kind of see how it went, but.
Yeah. So we, we have some money that we've talked about that we got in lieu of trees. And that's a fairly significant amount of money. And I, my understanding from speaking to you, Mimi, is that we have to use that for plantings, I think, or something in that vein.
In that neighborhood.
Yeah. So that can also go toward the tree giveaway, I think. I, I'm, I would be in favor of leaving a budget item for the EAC, whether it's 10 or $20,000. The board can decide, but I think it's useful for the EAC to know, to have some expectations about their, their 2023 budgeting and spending.
Did, and forgive me if I don't know the answer to this. Did we get a budget proposal from the EAC about what they intend to spend next year or projects or anything like that? Or we're just guessing?
Guessing. I think it's just based on what's previously been in.
Right. But I, yeah. The EAC doesn't put work. We want to make sure you guys are funded. But I guess my concern is that's not how it's worked with any other, like Public Works tells us what they want to spend. The police tell us what they want to spend. I'm concerned that we're just coming up with a number without, we want to do the tree giveaway. It's going to cost this. We want to do the bird signs. It's going to cost this. I don't, I'm, I'm uncomfortable doing it without a budget submission. Here's what we want to do. I mean, we ask everybody else to make a budget submission. It would be helpful to know.
Might be too late for that this year, but me, but I agree with you. I think, because I think Sandy does that for parks. Puts together sort of what, what we would need. I don't know that we have time to do that.
May I say something?
Like a department budget. Parks isn't a committee budget.
Right.
The unique thing about EAC is it's a committee budget.
Sure.
Yeah. And, and, and there's a historic precedence to this.
Yeah. I mean, the first year, we, $20,000. And I remember when you were first forming, it was kind of like, hmm, what are we going to spend that on? And I'm like, God, you don't have to spend it all, right? But it seems, you know, you've come into your own and you've come up with these programs and this, this money definitely will be well spent. But just so you understand this, they are kind of an anomaly in terms of how our committee structure works. And you mentioned the historical committee. I would suggest it kind of in alignment with, with what Mimi said, that they just come to us anyway.
That's what I thought.
We paid out the general fund.
That's what I heard.
Have to make a separate line item. That's.
That's what I preferred. And that's kind of what I was talking about without the submission that you're talking about, without us knowing.
But then why do we do it differently for the, we want to be consistent?
Their committees. I mean.
Right. But I mean, historic HRC.
So I'm, I'm saying, saying either they all make submissions or nobody makes a submission. And they're just, they just have to come to us and make requests. You understand what I'm saying?
I'm not in favor of nobody making submissions.
Well, that's why I, I feel like, no, I feel like ideally they should all be making submissions, but we're not basing it on a submission. That's all.
I think Mark would like to say something.
If I may, historically, we have made a specific set of proposals to the board. This year, we, I think we've been just so busy with things like the tree giveaway and Lower Gwinnett Day and a number of the other activities that it's weird. It's a topic for our, our next meeting to kind of decide what we'd like to do next year. So I apologize that we've just been literally so active, just getting things done that we just, it has not crept to the top of the agenda to submit that. And I apologize for that. We would appreciate having that kind of budget guidance, but we, and we're, so we're late and that's, that's my fault. But that, that's kind of where we are. I, again, I appreciate your forbearance, potentially with approving some level. So we understand what we could, where we should fit. And we know that everything we spend has to come before the board every time we try to spend it. So there'll, of course, there'll be limits and controls as we go. But our next meeting in November is when we were going to sit down and kind of lay out what we would do next year. Typically, we would have done that in September, but we were getting ready for the tree giveaway. And it was just, that was the highest priority at the time.
Were, were you solicited for a budget, Mark?
Not specifically, but we should have known. And, and I take responsibility for that. Again, we were just so caught up in the September meeting with, are we ready for all these things? And lower the fall fest and the tree giveaway and, and everything else that it just, it slipped.
Yeah. It's a good problem to have when the committee is so active with so many things. But yeah, I think maybe going forward, there needs to be more of a, this is the deadline, have to have your budget in. If, if that's the way, you know, to Mike's point, that he'd like to see proactively, prospectively, what the budget is going to be used for.
We, we understand.
We weren't here to, there's no need to take blame or guess blame. We were just trying to understand like how it has worked since you are the only committee that has a, I guess, an identified budget.
Right. And in the past, you know, when we started setting up these budgets, I was going to say, you know, our, our board liaison, Mark would just say, you know, I'm putting this in, okay? And he would do it in time and we'd say, okay, sure. And then we, then we'd work from there. And now it's kind of, you know, we're supposed to be walking on our own two feet here and we're trying to do it on our own. And we just, we just slipped. So I, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to beat myself up, but I, I believe in taking responsibility for actions. And if we miss a deadline, we missed the deadline and I, I apologize for that.
Okay.
We'll do, we'll do better.
Okay.
So, so one thing is to sound.
We still want the money. That was, that was, that was all to get Mike to say yes.
But kind of from what I'm hearing, I think I might make just a little tweak to what, what we have in the draft budget and maybe be 15,000 to the stormwater management fund. There, there's other things you could potentially use it for if you didn't use it off of trees. But so 20 grand in general fund, 15,000 in the stormwater.
I think.
With notes in both places. So everybody can find where that is. Fire and ambulance. I, I left a spreadsheet in the dais for the board of just filling you in. As a reminder, I know there's new supervisors. I'm not proposing changes to it. We would maintain the same level of funding for the fire companies where we get the, the fire tax. All of the proceeds of the fire tax go to the two fire companies and are split in the portion, the 70, 30 proportion that it has been. The contribution from the township would stay the same, 165,000. And now we would add in the, the ARPA contributions. I just wanted to lay it out for the board to, you, I don't need an answer today. But if you have any questions or a discussion now, feel free. And otherwise we need to, I need to know by the next meeting, if there's any other changes.
Just to. Okay. I think I'm clear. Okay.
I, I had, there has been, you know, they're not formal requests, but both fire companies have made comments about there are large vehicle purchases coming their way and they're, they have some concerns about their ability to pay for it and that they would like to start having discussions with the township about possibly coming up with some kind of formula for regular contribute cap, contributions for capital purchases for vehicles and equipment. So we don't have a dollar amount. None of those conversations have happened yet. So my suggestion is just that I can include a note in one of the capital reserve line items that, that this is coming and have it on our, you know, there's, there'll be discussions to look into and hear from the fire companies about their needs for their vehicle and equipment purchases and kind of start that process, but not have a dollar amount or even saying this is definitely going to happen, but project on the to-do list.
Yeah. Thanks, thanks for that, Mimi. Yeah. It is an ongoing discussion now with the EMS committee, Kathleen and I, and in the fire companies. And so I, I do want to, at some point, make, have a discussion with the whole board about this situation. And we, we, we need to get it on the agenda at some point soon, I think.
I think we can talk about it in the subcommittee section.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Very good.
Pickleball. Understand there was discussion at the last park and rec commission about, and a request from at least one resident that the board reconsider a decision that was made at the budget workshop to hold off on re-striping any courts for pickleball. And instead to consider striping the basketball court at Oxford Park, while also during the master planning process for the, the different parks, looking for a site for a dedicated pickleball. So there, there's an image on the screen of, of what that could look like and a memo that you were all given that was in the manager's port describing.
So what you're just asking us honestly is, is to budget for this. We're not voting on this. We're just.
Yeah. Are you okay? And, and so one step could be to, it, it would, there was about $35,000 in the capital budget for this, but that included about $30,000 for a possible windscreen. It would only cost roughly $5,000 to strike the court. So we could put it in the budget for the, it just in our operating budget for $5,000. Have that in there as, and then, you know, come back to the board for the decision, yes or no, whether to do it. And, and that decision could be just stripe it and see if it's, you need to have anything else done.
What about nets? Is that a bunch of it?
Be by O N.
What, what does the?
Bring your own net. That's, that's the, that's, we're going to stripe this. And if you don't have your own net, you, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know that was the case.
What does the park and rec board think about?
That's their recommendation.
That is the recommendation. Yeah. I'm not opposed to this, even though I said I thought it was a cop out if we just striped the court. But if that is what people want and, you know, while we have time to look for property or a place to put a pickleball court, I, I have no problem with that.
Yeah. It was clear from the parks board that the recommendation was not that this would solve the pickleball issue. It was, we've taken away the courts as they previously were at Penland Park. And so this will give them a place to play if they would like to, while we solve the problem and create the, you know, create, hopefully solve the problem in creating the master parks plan.
The 35,000 or the 30,000 for the windscreen, is that reflected in these large trees or is that existing trees that already are there? It's not.
Those trees are there. I think.
It's not like a natural.
Yeah. The concern from, when, when we looked at this, when we did the strategic plan with Gilmore, Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the concern was because there's all the trees on the one side. It may, we may need to
block the wind.
Provide for, yeah, another blockage on the other side. And I thought that there was a fencing concern too, but.
But the way that it's set up, it looks like it's going the opposite direction.
Is there a fence there now or no?
There is a fence there now, but I don't think it's.
There's a fence, but it's on the bottom part of the court there. And it's along the, the woods. So I think that fence there is to prevent the basketballs from rolling down into the woods. The concern with the wind is that if you look like plan north, that, that part of the park is very open. And I think that's kind of where the prevailing winds are coming. And those trees that Danielle pointed out are not significant enough to block the wind. So what you would do is you would install a chain link fence, similar location to the one that's on the bottom part of the court, but you'd put it on the top and then you would install a fabric on there to block the wind. And that's why it has to be so expensive because you're putting the fence in, but then the foundations of the, of the fence posts need to be more significant because there's more force against the fence because the wind is being blocked. But I don't necessarily think that it's something that you would need to do initially. It, it's almost like stripe it. And then if it gets to a situation where, where they, they can't play so frequently that it, because it's so windy, then you could entertain the windscreen.
Is it that windy there? Like just.
It's just, the, the ball is easily movable, by the way.
Okay.
It's like a giant ping pong ball.
Yeah. I'm going to tell you why I opposed this. I played pickleball all three times. And maybe I'm the most active pickleball player on the board.
Yeah.
But I know a bunch of people that play, including my wife. She plays pickleball. And I mentioned this to Janine, I did a admittedly non-scientific and informal survey of the people I know who play pickleball. It's a sort of self-selecting group. And I didn't explain what my position was, but I said, we, what about re-striping the court and have a place to play? I didn't know about the bring your own nets that I didn't know, because I'll tell you, I don't know a single person who has a pickleball net. That just to say the people I know. I mean, I know I was one of my garage. So I asked about a dozen people, every single one gave the same answer. They wouldn't be in favor of this. They wouldn't be in favor of it. And in fact, there's some pickleball courts that have this type of striping and it's taped. And they just pull up the tape. There's, there's a lot of lines. So what we're proposing is neither a pickleball court and really not anymore basketball court. It's a hybrid combo purpose. And in my experience, when you try to do two things, you do none well. And that's what this appears to me. And it's not an insignificant amount of money, because I'll tell you, I think if people are really going to play pickleball, you're going to spend the 30 grand on the windscreen. I think it's inevitable. And I think you're going to have to do all four sides. And I don't know if that was budgeted. I can't see any other way. And the ball, the, the, the other reason that you have the fencing is the ball goes out a lot. I mean, it goes out of bounds a lot, it's again, it's just a small ball. I have real concerns about when people want to play pickleball and people want to play basketball, what are we going to do about that? I mean, it just, this seems like we're trying to serve two different groups and we're not going to serve either of them well. So I understand people want pickleball, believe me, I'd like pickleball in this township. But I'd like to do it right and not put a bandaid on it for, even for a short time. Because I think what, what we, what is at risk is both the people who want to play pickleball, who don't have a net or even who have a net, and then the people who want to play basketball. I just think it's, it seems to be a mistake that we're not, it won't accomplish what we hope.
I, I'm admittedly not the demographic that plays pickleball. I don't really think you are either.
A different conversation for another time. I think that if the people of Lower Gwinnett who play pickleball are begging us to give them some pickleball, however cheaply put together it would be just to satisfy their pickleball addiction until we can give them a permanent pickleball location so they can just go ham with pickleball, we should just let them.
And if, if the nets, you're very upset about the nets. I think that we could, Sandy has proposed in her memo, I know, but, well, we could buy nets. We could buy nets. Put them in the township building and you got to rent them if you want them. The people who come to Parks and Rec and have been coming for, before I was on this board and come to like almost every meeting, asking for pickleball, want this. So, I mean, if, I think that we can try it and it's a reasonable amount of money. If it doesn't work, we wouldn't do the windscreen, right? If people aren't using it, they're not enjoying it, they're upset, they don't, there's no nets. They don't like all the lines, the kids are playing pickup ball when they want to play, which I don't think will happen. I think Sandy proposed developing, you know, rules and timing, you know, again, it's enforcing, but if it doesn't work, we won't do the, the windscreen. And we know that in the future, when we do hopefully solve a pickleball problem, a multi-use court won't work. But we know it's going to take a long time for that plan to be completed, funded, the renovations completed for the parks, the, the dream pickleball court to be built, if hopefully we can do it. And so in the meantime, I, I would like to make a motion to accept the parks.
I just want to be clear, I don't think that this is a good solution, but if they are begging for it, if they are coming to your park and rec meeting.
There's been, there's been, but Pedro is like the guy.
And this isn't a solution.
No, this is not a solution, this is a banding.
It's not even a banding, it's just an interim offering for them to play.
To be able to play.
We looked, we talked about it with, with Gilmore when we went through for the strategic plan and pickleball was, was raised as, you know, a high priority. And this was sort of the Gilmore's proposal as the best thing we could do right now as an immediate.
Offering.
Temporarily, yeah. I don't want to say solution.
It's a stopgap, yeah.
And then, you know, endeavor to, to truly solve the problem, because I agree, this isn't, I would love to have a better option.
A dedicated pickleball court, yeah.
I agree, I'm, yes, dedicated, dedicated pickleball courts. I just, again, I, I, no disrespect to anybody, I don't think this is, you know, the fact that we haven't really thought through the net issue is just a weird issue to me, but.
It's not uncommon, though, it's my understa- again, I don't play pickleball, but it's not uncommon that, that you bring your net.
Okay, I'm just, I, I know, okay.
But I.
You want to complete your motion or did you complete your motion?
I would like to make motion that we accept the park, the recommendation for the park and rec board to.
Do we need to make a motion because this is just adding it to the budget? Yeah, we don't need to make a motion.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
I'll second it. I mean, we can if we want it.
Motion withdrawn. But I think we should put it in the budget.
Okay.
So, okay, so when is the striping going to happen?
Well, it's just in the budget, we didn't pass the budget yet and then we have to pass the budget and then potentially talk about it.
And so we're, we're not passing the budget for a while.
No, well, December.
Okay, so no pickleball stripes in, in the middle of winter, this is going to put it, you know.
They don't play in winter, do they? They do.
Well, they wouldn't be playing at Oxford.
They wouldn't be playing at Oxford, would they? I mean, Riccardi Park kind of stops in November.
This was in the budget for twenty twenty three, I think. And we had taken it out, but it. The Parks and Rec, when they found that out, they asked that it be put back in.
Gotcha, okay. Because they weren't asked to take it out.
Right.
All right, move on, turn it back on.
So I, I just wanted to put in front of you a page from the budget that has all the different transfers out of the general fund, just to give you a chance to kind of think about this a little bit before the next meeting. So you see the amount of money, which is, is pretty significant, that's been transferred from the general fund the last couple of years into the various capital funds. The, we haven't figured out the exact numbers for here, the, the capital budgets are pretty much done. We just now need to pull any money from that, finish the fund balance analysis and see if there's any money that's necessary for the projects. I don't think there's going to be, I think there's enough fund balance in there. So then the next question just becomes in another week, as we, we finish up the budget, what kind of surplus you'd be looking at this year? And then what recommendations from the staff to you in December about potential whether to do any transfers from the twenty twenty two surplus. But if there's particular, you know, it, it, I'm not aware if there are any other plans for, for transfers or if you're building up reserves or anything like that, definitely let me know. That's why I wanted just to get this, this piece, it's one of the last pages of the budget. I think it could be easily buried in there when, at the next meeting, you're going to get a much more comprehensive summary of the budget. So I wanted to pull this piece out.
Transfer to Park and Rec Fund? There normally is.
There hasn't been for the last couple of years and I, I think that's because of the amount of fund balance that's in there. I know there was several years ago, but there wasn't in twenty one or twenty two.
Is that because of COVID?
I think because your reserves were large enough that it wasn't necessary. You probably, because you've been transferring, it was built up, yeah, so that. And there's, and, and that fund, you know, you have enough money right now for twenty two, but I'm not, that's what we'll put together then, like, you know, beginning and ending balances in each fund from the budget and compare that to the fund balances and see if there's any obvious transfers. All right, that's all I have, do you have any other questions about the budget topics or anything?
I don't. Don't think so. Any other questions?
Yeah, did we end, what did we end up for the EAC, the twenty from one?
Twenty thousand in the general fund, fifteen thousand in the stormwater fund.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
I'm done.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have the Spring House Phase Two roadway improvement projects. Approval, approval of the property agreements for the right of way. We had two. So we had a recommend, the recommendation for our motion to approve the temporary construction easements and permanent right of way easements for tax parcels that you see before you, to allow for the widening of Sommetown Pike. Those temporary construction easements are in small amounts of permanent right of ways easements are needed for three property owners on Sommetown Pike for the planned widening of that road. Are there any questions from the board? And all three property owners have signed the agreement at this point. Are there any questions from the public?
I just have one question, so I'm, I'm unclear about Sommetown Road, is that the Lower Gwinnett responsibility or is that a state road county?
Sommetown Pike's owned by Montgomery County. And so we have to get a permit from them to do the work along there. And they require that these agreements be executed before the workshop.
Okay, thank you.
Are any additional questions from the board? Seeing none, I would like to recommend the approval of the temporary construction easements and permanent right of way for those three tax parcels that we see before us, twelve oh one Sommetown Pike, nine twelve Sommetown Pike and nine fifty one Penland Pike needed for the widening of Sommetown Pike, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you so much. Um, next up, we have the approval of the amended interim managers contract that was included in the manager's report, are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, I would like to make a motion to approve the amended interim managers contract, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you so much. Next up is the financials year to date and the balance sheet. I believe we do not need, need to make a motion to accept, is everyone received and reviewed? Are there any questions?
No.
Very good, next up is the approval of the minutes, the minutes that were included in the, the manager's report is October eleventh, October thirteenth, which was a town hall at Folkways. And October eighteenth was not included. Spring House Estates was not included. So the approval of the minutes for the October eleventh regular board supervisor meeting and the October thirteenth town hall at Folkways. Okay, okay. Are there any questions? Are there any questions on the minutes? You want to make the motion, Kathleen?
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the updates on township commissions and board subcommittees, I think we have an update from the EMS committee.
We already talked about some of it.
Yeah, so there, there are things in progress that we're talking, the, we're following up with the fire committees, fire boards. So as, as this board is aware, there is a discussion around the potentially building a substation on two oh two, close to Folkways property. And in fact, this would be property that we negotiated with Folkways when we deeded them a small piece of land that's adjacent to their property. This has been in discussion for a few years about whether to build a substation there and exactly what the budget would be for it. Since that was proposed in the intervening years, I think there has been less interest in following through on that. But the, the North Wells Firehouse people station still would like to have a substation at Folkways. And so we're going to follow up with that and, and see what the, what we could negotiate with Folkways. And that meeting hasn't been set up yet, but Mimi was, I think, going to arrange that. Frank is going to arrange it, sorry. And so, you know, anybody, as far as I'm concerned, can come to that discussion. But we're, it's a fact finding discussion to see what we might be able to negotiate in terms of maybe renovating the garage that already accommodates the fire truck on the Folkways property and not, and that would take the place of committing a large amount of money to building a new facility on two oh two. So that, that is an ongoing discussion and Kathleen and I would bring that discussion back to this board for, for input. The second thing we've alluded to is a request to consider a standing yearly capital input, which would be split between the, the two fire stations on a three-year rotation. And that has been proposed to us by Frank again. But there's a lot of discussion that needs to go into that in terms of what the, the communities, the fire stations support, what part of their capital budget is being contributed to by those other communities or municipalities. And we haven't yet seen an exact budget for this request in terms of justifying exactly how much the amount would be. But the idea would be to set the money aside so that each fire station would know that they could count on money every three years, say, that they could put toward buying a new fire truck or other capital expense. The, the main expenses that are coming up in the near future are fire trucks. And so they're on the order of a million dollars. And so it's just, the, the argument is that it is not possible to support the fire companies now with the high, high cost of all of their equipment by soliciting donations. That, that doesn't seem to be sufficient. So we, as a community, need to try to figure out a long, you know, in collaboration with the fire stations, a, at least a partial solution to the funding situation. You know, to provide a definite source of, of funding to these fire stations. And it's, you know, it's a very involved discussion, I think, in terms of looking down the road twenty years from now, what's going to happen with the, the fire companies. And I think Mimi has told us, in her opinion, that the, all volunteer fire companies may, may not be a thing in the future. And, and so it's, it's a little bit of a black box to me, what's going to happen in twenty years. But it, it, you know, so we're, we're in discussions about that. And again, that's something that we want to bring back to the board when we get more information and, and then have a board discussion. So that's all.
Can I just ask a couple clarifying questions?
Sure.
At one point you said North Wales, so you're talking about the North Penn Volunteer Fire Company owned that parcel. They are the ones who said explicitly they do want to keep a structure there?
Yes.
They want to keep a fire truck in Lower Gwinnett Township. They want to keep a fire truck.
And the building needs to be of a size that can handle a new fire truck, so that.
And the fire truck that they want, is it the antique fire truck? Or is it an actual functioning fire truck?
A new one.
They want a new one, but they don't have a new one currently. Okay, so the one that's being stored right now at that, I guess it's called a substation, is the antique, correct?
It's quite old, but it's still functional.
Oh, it is functional.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's not the, I'm talking.
They take it out.
They take it out every single day.
So it's the functional fire truck?
Yeah, but it's old.
Okay, no, 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 I'm thinking the antique antique, the antique.
They have that on display up in their firehouse.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not agreeing to build a building for an antique.
The clarification I was looking for. And they just want a substation to, or a structure to hold that fire, that, that fire truck?
To hold a fire truck, not the one that's there now.
A different one?
Yes.
Okay.
They have to replace that one, it's, it's at the end of its useful life. Well, I shouldn't say that, it's approaching.
Well, I think it is at the end of its useful life, but, but, yeah.
So you're not at a point where you're making a recommendation to us, you're just presenting that they want to have a further discussion?
Oh, yes, yeah, we're still early in discussion, but this is an FYI.
Gotcha.
As to what we're talking with them. As to what we're talking with them about.
Okay.
Um, but, but you know, once, once a decision is made to buy a fire truck, it still takes like two years before they can get the fire truck. But before that, it probably will take two years to get the funding. Uh, so.
Okay.
So it's not an emergency decision, but we should go ahead and, um, have the conversations and figure out the path forward.
Okay. You guys are meeting regularly at this point around this topic?
Uh, I think four times a year, not monthly, sorry. Um, but like Tessie said, we'll be meeting with, um, representatives of Folkways, just very casual conversation.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. I don't know, are there any other questions? Questions from the public? Okay. Now, there was a historic committee meeting on last Thursday, the twentieth. Uh, we toured the McCormick House. Um, it was a little interesting. Uh, it doesn't seem that the interior in any way reflects an historic character at all. Um, it's hard to even identify what it is. It looked like it was two separate homes, apartments, like apartments, homes. Um, we did kind of, some people were brave to go up into the, um, attic and actually see the pitching of the roof. And you could tell, once you were up there, that it probably was a school, like the back portion.
There were cer- there's definitely a fire, because you could see the damage up there too.
So that, so in the basement and apparently in the attic, you can tell that there was a fire at some point. But, uh, it's kind of very underwhelming, slightly scary. I don't know. If there's anything else to share.
Not a lot of charm.
Not a lot of charm. Um, so the historic committee kind of, we've concluded our meeting at the actual McCormick House and just kind of discussed, like, did there was a, you know, toward the outside, toward the inside, and kind of just got a, a better understanding of like what the makeup of the house is, because it doesn't make sense when you see it on the outside, what it actually looks like in the inside.
Yeah.
I was clearly cut up and rearranged in a manner that.
There's no remnant of it being a school.
There's a stone.
There's a large stone that's dated that says Gwinnett School eighteen eighty-eight. That's the only thing to say.
Thing about.
Yep.
So like, if you took the, if there's like siding on it, you couldn't take that off and see the original structure of the building.
No siding, but no.
Whatever, yeah.
It, it clearly looks like it was updated at some point and kind of stripped of all.
Added on.
That's unfortunate, that's.
Yeah.
Um, Parks and Rec, Matt, we talked about pickleball, we talked about the event, um, coming up this weekend. It's, I, I think, um, we have a typo on our agenda. It, it's actually at five, the concert starts, um. I think, yeah, I think, I believe it's at five, um.
So it's starting at five PM?
Yeah, they'll have, um, the barbecue place will be there.
Fat Boys BBQ?
Yeah, Fat Boys BBQ, vanilla's funnel cake, desserts will be there, um.
Open to the public.
Open to the public. There's decent amount of parking, um. Gwinnett Mercy has been, you know, really great at putting everything together and helping Sandy and Public Works and Police. Everybody's involved. So thank you all, um, for that. And come out and watch a spooky movie.
Is it, are there going to be signs on the campus directing people to where to go?
Yes, yes.
Um, I started that, did the EAC meet last week? No, no, are you next week?
Next week, yeah.
Okay. So upcoming meetings, the next Park and Rec meeting is November fifteenth. EAC is, is, uh, November ninth, Wednesday. And, um, historic, we, next historic committee meeting is November seventeenth. Um, just as a, I could say it in the updates, but just as an aside, our next board of supervisor meeting will be Monday, November seventh. Um, because the Tuesday is election day. So we will be holding it one day early. Um, I guess we're going to go to staff updates. Is there any updates from any staff?
Um, just one, oh, I mean, unless anybody else has one, but, um, the, um, we got our recycling check from the Northern Montgomery Recycling Commission through the DEP, um, uh, grant program that we're part of. So we got the check this week for twenty-four thousand dollars.
Also.
Also, um, this week, Public Works completed phase one of the, the capping out at Penambler Park. They expanded the pavement around the, uh, playground area. We're, we haven't yet installed the, uh, bench and picnic table, but it will be relocated there. And then my office is working on a redesign of the Stormwater Basin that exists on site. And, uh, we'll be submitting that design to DEP to get it approved. Phase two, we'll be paving the parking lot, which is in your budget for next year.
Thank you.
I should have had the pickup truck out front, but we got the pickup, uh, wrapped.
Oh.
Um, it's in the corner over here. I'll try and text somebody to tell them to move. Uh, it looks great. Uh, Bergy Ford donated the wrapping. Um, you have to look at it through the eyes of a ten-year-old, that, you know, it's, it's it's got a lot going on, but it looks great. Um, and we thank Bergy Ford for that. Next step, next year we'll be, we'll be putting lights on it and different things like that. So it's going to look really nice. Uh, it will be a giant this weekend. The fill-up cop car will be filled cop truck.
Okay.
So we'll have more room for food.
All right.
That's awesome. Is there a picture up on the website of the truck?
I don't know.
Okay.
Just one thing to add to the Penambler Park, we did have to remove the swing set. We're taking that opportunity since we have to get it reinstalled. We sent it out to be sandblasted and painted because it needed some maintenance anyway, so, uh, it's bound. Um, ready to clean up and reinstall by the spring, so it, it'll be missing for a little bit, but it's for a good reason. It'll look good as new when it goes back in.
That's it? Thank you, guys. Uh, just, just a quick update, Jim, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. Uh, I had a couple inquiries from people that lived on Brookside. Is there any anticipation when you would have, um, I guess, the finalization?
So the, the current plan is to ha- have it in a final form in, towards the end of November and then meet with, uh, we can set up a meeting to meet with the Brookside residents, and then we, we can also meet with, with Amble Yards, the school district, kind of all-involved parties and maybe in more, less formal, public setting, uh, to, to present the findings to them. And then, you know, following that, we can take their comments under advisement and then, you know, finalize the plan and bring it to the board for, you know, their adoption in December sometime. Does that sound okay?
Yep. And so when we say Brookside, will, you will allow people that live on Francis Endor, um, the couple people that live on Night Road?
Honestly, anybody that came to that, like, initial kickoff meeting that we had at the school district's admin building would be more than welcome to come.
Sounds good, thank you. Uh, supervisor comments, Tessie?
Um, so the big news in, uh, Gwinnett Valley is the bridge is open uh, over the creek, uh, going to the post office. So, hooray. Uh, we've been waiting patiently for many months to get that, uh, finished, and it's a, a pretty nice bridge. Um, so, yeah, we can celebrate getting to the post office and the train station easier now, depending on which side of the road you live on.
That's, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, yeah.
I have nothing, thank you. Okay.
Schofield's?
Mike.
Yeah.
Um, I just want to remind everybody, there's a whole lot happening on October twenty-ninth. Um, from, uh, fill of the cop and cider to prescriptions are being taken back. And then there is going to be a movie in the park with music. So come out and participate in all the activities that are happening on the twenty-ninth. I also, again, just wanted to publicly congratulate Detective, um, Beth Samborn, who was recognized last Friday at Mission Kids. And we were just so lucky and so honored to be able to have Beth as part of our team in Lower Gwinnett Police Department. And, um, just appreciate and thankful that she's here. So just wanted to recognize her again publicly. Um, with that, I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned, thank you.